So this evening, as we have made a dedication to at our public events, having the Bronxville Promise in action. And this evening, I'm going to invite Mr. McCora up, our middle school principal, to speak about an innovative program in the middle school, our Ambassador Program. And this highlights two aspects of our Bronxville Promise: leadership, as well as portions of the heart. So we have here this evening Anthony DiMatto, Karis Eamon Thurmond, and Preet Kapoor. Mr. McCora, will you please step up with them? Thank you.
Thank you so much, and it's really our pleasure to be here this evening to speak to you a little bit about a program that's basically as old as they are in middle school. So this started, to give you a little history of this, it started on a recess field when I was working at the elementary school with the then curriculum leader and PE teacher, Mr. Baglika. We had a bunch of students come up to us right around this time of year, it was November, it was right before the Thanksgiving recess, and they started like asking us a lot of questions about middle school. And there was definitely like a little angst about it, about going to middle school. And I remember Mr. Baglika and I on a very cold recess field that day, we're talking about, you know, this is Bronxville, and it's so nice that we have all of the kids on one campus and in one building. And we should be able to kind of come up with something that makes, takes a little of that tension and that angst away. So the Ambassador's Program is something that this particular class did not experience, but they've been a big part of it moving forward. We have three amazing students here, and it's always my pleasure to turn it over to students. So we'll start off with Anthony.
So what is the Bronxville Ambassador's Program? The program is experienced students helping younger students get ready for middle school. It is seventh and eighth graders showing leadership and compassion for our other students. The Ambassador Program is also an attempt on our part as a school to help students who go to Bronxville Elementary School feel confident about the big transition of going to middle school, essentially taking the anxiety out of it. So let's talk about middle school for a second. Middle school is the second big transition in a student and parent academic and school journey. The first is entering kindergarten. Middle school is a time of tremendous growth. Students will grow physically and emotionally more in these three years than they will in any other three-year period of their lives. Middle school is a time of wonder, middle school is a time to develop good habits, and it is a time of challenge.
And when we are speaking to kids about a middle school transition, especially our fifth graders, we, for our visual learners, we speak about it being a beautiful bridge, because it really is that time between the wondrous world of elementary school and taking them on a journey to get to that amazing world of high school. So we use the bridge as a visual for that. And on that bridge, what we do is, as Anthony mentioned beautifully, try to develop habits and a passion that will, something they'll move forward in high school.
So what are the challenges of transitioning into middle school? Suggestions that have been made to ease the transition are making social connections. Our ambassadors work on making connections with the fifth graders, and speaking of middle school from the student perspective, to ease any tensions or concerns that they may have.
We do all the little things before they get here. We go back to elementary school and see our fifth grade teachers. We show them everything they need to know about our middle school. We give them tours of the middle school, and our teachers take time to say hello. We show them how to read a schedule, and we give them their lock and show them how to use it. There's even a future award-winning video made on how to open a lock. Students keep their locks all summer so they can practice before the school year begins. Our goal is to let them see our middle school for what it is: a place where people care about each other, a place where people are there for each other. That is what Bronxville Middle School is all about. This has led to positive transitional change. The ambassador work has led to an earlier relationship beginning with our elementary school families. This allows the parent transition to also begin sooner. The ambassadors now take part in speaking at the new middle school parent orientation. This is an in-person meeting where our parents meet with the ambassadors, as well as staff, and have the opportunity to tour the building.
Timeline and evolution. This program is for seventh and eighth graders. Started in 2022 to 2023, started working with a small group of seventh and eighth graders. Classroom visits were towards the end of the year. 2023 to 2024 school year, 75 students signed up to be ambassadors in spring 2024. Meetings, there were meetings with students about world language and music, lunch with fifth graders, classroom visits, tours and locks. 2024 to 2025, sign each sixth grader and seventh grader with a buddy. Community outreach 2024 to 2025, reaching out to senior citizen organizations, nursing homes, rehabilitation centers, to provide companionship, care, and comfort for the elderly and ill. The Bronxville Promise Tendons in Action: Leadership. Students will help create an environment or culture that nurtures listening and understanding. Heart of the Promise: Students will be empathetic and supportive of others.
Mr. Baglika.
Thank you, Preet. When Mr. McCora said I had to conclude, I'm just not sure how you conclude. You had easy work starting. I have to go after the students, which I understand now why you wanted me to go at the end, because I'm not sure I can follow that up.
That's why you're the AP.
I figured that. And one of the things that Principal McCora said, I do recall that discussion outside when I feel like every student was coming up to us, and it was nice to have students there, because I felt warmth, because we were freezing out there on the field. But that conversation transitioned to the past two years, working with Rakia Adams and Joe when I was at the elementary school, and that's where we started this Ambassador's Program for the transition, you know, of fifth to sixth. And that transition has led, I think, to some great changes. Award-winning video that Joe made on how to open a master lock, which we should share out, should be part of the presentation, and has also now led to it just being at the end of the year to transition fifth grade to sixth grade to starting earlier and earlier. And actually, this year, one of the other things we'd like to roll out for the fifth graders is them going through a typical day that a middle schooler might go through. So that's going to be nice to, you know, pair them up with some middle school students, see a typical day, go to lunch, and see what lunch looks like, maybe a little open gym in the middle school, which is very popular, and also has, as you heard so lovely and beautifully, gone out into the community, which is great. So I leave you with that, and I'm sure that there's more to follow as we go into next year with the Ambassador's Program, but I do think we need a huge round of applause for us.
Thank you so much for sharing the good work of the Ambassador's Program. Have a good night. Get your homework done.
All right, I want to go back here. So onward and downward, we're going to do, we need a motion to approve the revised schedule of board meetings. Motion for this?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is a nice opportunity to say publicly, we are changing the June board meeting. Thank you for accommodating that. And this will allow our elementary school fifth grade moving up ceremony to be on June 17th, Tuesday, June 17th, which is the day before the eighth grade moving up ceremony. So thank you for accommodating that and moving the board meeting that month to Monday, June 9th.
You're welcome. I think we would, next, we have, we have an annual authorization of the lead evaluators. You want to just give us some color on that?
Sure. So typically, there is a second administrator in a school district, at least a second in a school the size we want to, to have the authority to supervise principals. So it is the superintendent, and I asked the board to consider also approving Ann Meyer as our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction to also be a lead evaluator, and she has gone through that certification training. And that way, we'll have two administrators in the district with the authority to supervise principals.
Okay. Thank you. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. I just need another motion approval, the draft minutes from September 19th, and the special meeting we had on October 7th. Have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now comes the exciting part, right? I get to pause the regular meeting for public hearing, right?
That's right.
7/17. 7/17. Thank you, Connie. This is for the updated 2024-25 Safety Plan, District-wide Safety Plan. We had a 30-day comment period, am I right? We have any, anybody like to say anything? I think, anyone on the board? Everybody's okay?
Yep.
All right. Do we need a motion? Yes. We do not need a motion. Excellent.
Is there anyone online?
Online? Brad? No?
Okay. I'll check.
And just to remind everyone, the board actually approved this district-wide safety plan in July at our reorganization meeting, and then in August, New York State came down with additional requirements, and it was specifically a notification requirement. And if you recall, you've received notification from Vic Prini this fall, the week before we do either a fire drill or a lockdown drill. So that is the new requirement. We are already implementing it, but as a result of it, we had to open up the 30-day comment period in September, and now the board can consider approval after this hearing.
Okay. Thank you, Rachel. No comments. Okay, so we can adjourn the hearing and reconvene the public session. I need a motion to approve the district-wide plan. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Over to Dr. Kelly.
Thank you. I want to just begin by acknowledging the tragedy that happened in Eastchester schools yesterday, and in support of our friends and neighbors over at the Eastchester School District, I'd like to just have a moment of silence in memory of the loss of their fifth grade teacher, Arlene Connolly O'Neil. Thank you. And I want to thank our crisis team here in Bronxville that was able to get together immediately, and we were able to deploy four of our faculty members, three psychologists and one counselor, to spend the day there yesterday, supporting them at Anne Hutch School. And today, we did send two faculty members back. So we will continue to support our neighbors for as long as they need that. Prior to our board workshop that we held on October 7th, the board approved an off-cycle foundation grant that I just want to mention, because that was a workshop, so it wasn't televised. So I do want to just thank the foundation for this grant. It will allow four of our faculty to attend a state-of-the-art conference in North Carolina regarding transition planning for our special class students. One of the most influential leaders in this work is Inclusive U at Syracuse University, and we're proud to acknowledge that one of our alum from the class of 2024, Jack Pasquale, became the first student from Bronxville to be accepted into this highly prestigious and competitive program. Inclusive U is a global model for extending the inclusion we practice here in Bronxville to the post-secondary level. So congratulations to Jack. You continue to make us proud. The PTA's warm and welcoming spirit has been in full swing this fall with the parent socials, the new family reception, and their hosting of a staff appreciation luncheon just yesterday. And that includes all employees, teachers, aides, clerical, facilities, and security. And it's really a beautiful opportunity to bring our school community together, so thank you. I am honored to announce that the PTA will be hosting an alumni event to raise funds to help complete our Farmfield Road beautification project. This fundraiser will be a concert of an alumni band, Bear's Choice, with one of our very own high school teachers, Dan Martin, and his three Bronxville High School friends, performing at the Women's Club on Friday evening, November 29th. So look for that, save the date, mark your calendars, and make every effort to attend. It promises to be a blast. This is the time of year, I want to remind everyone, where I draft a letter to the community regarding our tenure candidates. This letter will outline the rigor of this process, and it will also solicit feedback from parents. So please look for that letter next week, and then we will include a link to that letter in our weekly Bronco Beats as a reminder from November through February. And lastly, New York State has designated this week as School Board Recognition Week.
Go on.
Go on. And as such, I would like to take a moment and recognize the seven of you. You work hard, you volunteer, you support us, and you do all of that tirelessly for this school community, and especially for our students. So thank you.
Okay.
Oh, yes. Now, it is my honor to introduce two of our student representatives. We have two new junior co-liaisons to the board this year, Louise Jacobs and Karik Chansky. Tonight, we welcome our senior, Matthew Curran. And Louise, welcome.
Thank you. Just as Dr. Kelly was saying, this year, the SFL appointed two new school board representatives, Karik Chansky and Louise Jacobs. And with that, I'm going to hand it off to Louise for tonight's report.
Yeah, so as Matthew said, I'm Louise Jacobs. I'm in 11th grade, and I'm very excited to be representing the student body this year at some board meetings. So now that everyone's kind of settled in from September into the year, freshmen have gotten used to high school and have started to join clubs. Many clubs have been starting to plan different events and fundraisers. So clubs such as French Club and Red Cross have done bake sales for raising money for Hurricane Helena relief. SFL is having a breast cancer awareness event next week, where we will be raising money by selling pins and bracelets to support breast cancer charities. The SFL is also planning some full high school events soon for some stress relief, including a Jeopardy game that will take place as a whole high school. The election for ninth-grade class officers is coming up in the next few weeks to elect their grade president, vice president, treasurer, secretary, and SFL representatives. So once they do that, they'll be able to have meetings as a grade and start to plan different events. The freshman transition program has been off to a good start. Leaders have had one push-in to health classes, where they discussed how the year was going so far, and freshmen asked their leaders any questions, just about high school in general and about their adjustment to that. Also, the freshman transition attended a trip in September to Boundless Adventures ropes courses, where it was a really good team bonding experience for all the different groups. The add/drop date for courses was on October 7th, where students could choose to add or drop any courses that they selected. So now, students' courses for the first semester are finalized. Fall sports teams are on full swing, and some teams are approaching playoffs and sectional games. Many teams are doing very well this season. I know football is undefeated, and teams such as field hockey and the boys and girls soccer team have fairly good records. Girls tennis will be starting the sectional team tournament tomorrow, and we have a match against Rynek, and if we win that, then we will move on to the quarterfinals and semifinals. There's many events coming up next week, such as Picture Day on October 25th, and there's a PSAT next Wednesday, and that's all I have.
Terrific. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Louise.
I guess you guys should do your homework, too.
Yeah. Applications.
That's right. That's right. Good luck.
Thanks, guys.
So this is traditionally the board meeting where we review the enrollment report and class sizes. So you have these slides before you. This enrollment report, this first slide, is specific to October 1st. So there is some changes that happen, but generally, we have to report as of October 1st to New York State. We are actually, this year, a total of 1,585, which is 35 more students than our demographer had projected. And that really hit us specifically in second and ninth grade. I did have an opportunity to speak to the demographers, because I think there's some more data we can get to them that will help them look at some trends. And I think it's specific, what we discussed was, it is typical for us every year to lose eighth graders and to gain ninth graders. And usually, it's close to a wash. This year, it was not. We had many more ninth graders than anticipated. So I want them to look specifically at the number of students over the past 10 years who have left at the end of eighth grade and who have come to us new in ninth grade, to see if there's any trends or anything we can glean from that data. As the board knows, we added a second grade section as a result of those numbers. Typically, you can go on to the second page, you'll see it broken down. In second grade, we had seven new registrants. We're used to summer registrants, but not necessarily seven in one grade level in the elementary school. And so I recommended to the board that we added an extra section, because we have class-sized guidelines. It's not a policy, but there are guidelines. And in kindergarten through second grade, we really don't like to go above low 20s. And if we had not added that second grade section, those classes would have been 23, 24. And that's just something I wasn't comfortable with. So we were very fortunate to be able to find a second grade teacher in August to be able to add that section. You see that these, these class sizes are favorable. They look good. We're going to be watching closely, because as you see right now in third grade, we have five sections with nice class sizes. Our current fourth grade, though, is six sections. So at this juncture, I'd say we don't need six sections in fourth grade next year. So we're going to be continuing to watch very closely the elementary enrollment, so it can help us plan for the budget next year.
Are you able to fluidly repurpose teachers to different grades if need be?
Well, if we're overall down one, we'll hope for retirement, honestly. So we don't have to, you know, have any kind of reduction in force.
About the number of fifth graders going into sixth grade, that's a remarkably large class at 132, if we have, and you've got 117 in the current sixth grade, would you add sections or look to bring somebody up to the middle school?
We, if you look, we can go to the next page, actually, because that breaks down the class sizes in middle school right now. And they are, again, are their favorable class sizes, so we'll be looking carefully at that. We were hoping that maybe we'd be able to go down a section in middle, but with that incoming fifth grade, it probably won't be able to happen. So we do have some wiggle room. Our hope is to not add any sections. And we do have some wiggle room. When you look at the average class sizes, there's certainly some room there. You know, unique to middle school schedules is that they're fairly prescribed, right? There are no free periods, and there are, you know, set requirements. So on the one hand, that makes scheduling a little easier, but now that we've gone to these 46- and 56-minute classes, we do have a little less flexibility. So, you know, Joe is the middle school principal, and with Anthony's help as AP, you know, will be monitoring that and doing mock schedules before it's budget season to make sure that we can fit the incoming fifth. Before them, we'll also get some projection enrollments, but we have a sense, we do usually lose some students after fifth, not as many as we lose after eighth. What's hard to determine is how many summer registrants there'll be.
Please, just a quick, one more question.
Please.
The math in middle school, the two sections that have 25 to 29 kids, what grade is that? Do we know what grades? Those are eighth grades?
It's algebra, and it actually goes down.
Okay.
The first quarter.
Right. Oh, because they, yeah, I get it.
Enough said.
Yeah, I got that.
It's actually dropped since then. Yeah.
It's a little rough after that first algebra test.
And those overages that we see in middle, are the, is that fairly consistent year to year? I see it's math, science, language, saying of the larger classes. Are they consistent, meaning these are the classes that usually bulk up, particularly at the beginning of the year?
Yeah. The algebra tends to be the biggest one at the beginning of the school year, and it has an effect on some, but as it needs to add, it also results in other ones.
And what about science and language?
Science and language, you'll notice that we downsized Latin to one section per.
Right.
Obviously, that has an effect, because they're rolling off in Latin as a singular one part of the day.
Mm-hmm.
So it causes certain numbers to roll up a little bit, so where you may have one section that's like 26, the ripple effect is you'll have a number over 19, because there's more places to put it. The Spanish and the French need, because there's multiple sections. That's what had a little ripple effect on it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. And then the last slide outlines the class sizes by subject area in the high school. It's important to note that we graduated a senior class of 114, maybe, last year, and our incoming ninth grade class is 139. So if you think about it, that's an additional section, but across every subject area. So you will see that we do have a number of overages. And really, you know, for a, for a high school our size, we offer these innovative electives. And we take pride in that. We want, it's of high interest to the students, and it helps set them apart. And you aren't going to find someone out there who can teach just all electives, right? Because very often, they're specific to a subject matter, whether it's engineering, computer science. So I still advocate for offering these electives, and that is why you'll see the overages you'll see on the personnel agenda. So again, I think these class sizes are relatively consistent. I think there was a nice improvement, if you look at 2023 to 2024, the last couple of years, there was a nice improvement in terms of less classes that had less than 15, and more classes that were 15 to 19, and 20 to 24. And so that was, I think, a good improvement to the overall program, and we've held consistent since then. Any other questions on that? Good?
Yeah. I think we're on the first one.
Move on to personnel?
Yeah.
So again, this is the time of year where I asked the board to approve the overages. It's been a, it's been a nice strategy, I think, on the district's part, to offer these overages and not, in certain subject areas, hire another teacher. One, it's often hard to find highly qualified part-time teachers, and two, if they were full-time, with that comes the expense and benefits. So this has worked well for us. So you'll see, actually, items F through double H are all overages. We have a few family leaves we're planning for. Historically, our ESL teacher has been a .8, and she teaches kindergarten through 12th grade. Historically, our ESL teacher has been a point eight and she teaches kindergarten through 12th grade, mainly first grade through 12th grade. We like full immersion in kindergarten. But we have had an increase in enrollments on asking you to revise her FTE to point eight-six. So she has ample time to teach everyone who's eligible. The revision of the curriculum leaders and, and teacher mentor lists are as a result of leaves. So we wanted to make those changes. And then you also have before you this evening, a winter coaching roster. We are, we still have two vacancies, a boys' basketball JV assistant and a girls' basketball second modified. So we are still recruiting for those two, but we wanted to get the initial winter coaching roster before you. So it's a long one tonight, A through double R. Happy to take any questions.
Could you just comment, I, I know you mentioned about the, the ESL one, from point eight to point eight-six. But we had, I think you had mentioned, we had nine to 11 ESL students before and we have eighteen this year? Is that right?
Yeah. We have twenty-one total. But she is not, she's servicing, I want to say sixteen or eighteen of them, sixteen.
Okay.
So with that, and, and, you know, we try and be as efficient as we can grouping students together. Easier to do that on the elementary level. A little harder to do that in, on the middle and high school level. But Christine Dowd has been instrumental working with Dana on her schedule and making sure that we're being as efficient as we can and still giving children the services they need.
Okay, thank you. Any other, any questions on personnel? None? Okay, I have a motion to approve personnel action items.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Okay.
Aye, okay.
Aye, thank you.
You're welcome. I think, Dan, I think we're on to you.
Yep. It's a bit early to accurately project a surplus from expenditures. However, we do know that there's pressure on salaries with the BTA settlement, the additional section that Rachel mentioned, overages and land changes. We're seeing all of those kind of adversely impact the salary budget. Obviously, we're going to watch these lines very closely. And right now, we're projecting all other expenditure lines, you know, currently projected as budgeted. The good news is we're projecting a surplus in revenues as both non-resident tuition and interest earnings will again be favorable this year. We saw that same situation last year. And right now, I'm forecasting about four hundred twenty-seven thousand in a revenue surplus so far. And, you know, once we get salaries fully encumbered, we'll know a little more. We are seeing, we are seeing a few favorable salary lines. I don't want to say it's doom and gloom. You know, there's, there's good news when we can't find teacher aides sometimes. But, so, you know, these things tend to offset each other. We're doing fairly well so far on health benefits as well. Our enrollment is not as high as it was projected as some of the retirees, replacements for retirees have opted to take the buyout. So that's good news. So it's not doom and gloom, but it's not roses either.
Okay. All right, any questions on preliminary financials?
Dan, it looks like we budgeted pretty well.
Yeah.
So nice work. Is there anything that jumps out at you here that wasn't expected?
Not at the moment. It's salaries, I'm worried about salaries. That's the big thing. Because, you know, usually you have, you have one hit here or there with the salaries. This, you know, we're getting it back from three or four different directions. So that's, we're keeping an eye on that.
I think we have Susan there. Susan, do you have any questions for Dan? Are you okay? Do you hear us?
I have something volumes on.
All right, we will come back to Susan if she can.
Sorry.
Oh, there she is.
No questions.
Oh, okay, perfect. We'll move on. Dan, I think you're.
Yeah, we have an action item.
Yep.
Our annual extension of the food service contract with Chartwell's, which was bid in the summer of 2021. We awarded the bid, which is eligible for continuation for five years. We're satisfied with Chartwell's services. The attached resolution and SED paperwork are necessary to continue the contract for another year.
Okay, I get a, how long have we been with them, Dan?
I think roughly 2010.
Okay.
We've done, I think this is probably the, that was their second or third bid that they won with us, I think third.
Okay.
And last two times, they were the only bidder.
Okay.
You know, we only have one cafeteria, so it's not really attractive to people who don't know us.
And Dan, this year around, was there only one bidder?
Yes.
Okay. And, and did you say it was a five-year extension that we're looking at right now?
No, 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 no. This is, I think, year four of a five-year extension.
Oh, I got it.
Or of a, of a, we're, we're required to bid it out every five years. Last time we bid it out was 2021.
Okay.
So we'll be bidding it again in, for '26.
I got it, okay. And, and generally, are you hearing from faculty or parents or anything about the quality of the food offered by Chartwell's or the, or the services?
Yes, you know, we went through probably, it was just before the pandemic. We went through a concerted effort to really upgrade and I think it's worked out very well. You know, I eat there at least three, four times a week and, you know, this year, I think we added, what, kindergarten and first grade in the last couple of years? They're going lights out with them right now, like even better than anticipated. And it's, it's a difficult program to run because they compete with an open campus where kids can go out. So it's hard to predict what they'll do on a daily basis. So I think, I think they're doing a good job.
And can you remind us, Dan, or do we have any financial exposure or do we just pay them an annual administrative fee?
We, we do have financial exposure. They're, they're required to break even. And, you know, we run a, a tight fund balance in the school lunch fund. It's not supported by the general fund at all. So, you know, that's it.
So if they lose money, we cover their loss?
The opposite. If they lose money, they cover it.
So then what's our liability?
There, there isn't. There's no financial li, exposure.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, I get a, we need a motion to approve the resolution.
Actually, one more question, Dan. Is there anything we should be doing to help motivate other bidders next year?
There's really only three.
Okay.
In New York, there, there's, there's Chartwell's, there's Aramark and there's Whitson's. And they're really the only three that operate in southern New York State.
Okay.
And, and I've, I've worked with the other two in the past and this is going better than, than that, that went. Aramark was here before Chartwell's and it's, it's night and day compared to where we are now, compared to where we were 10 years ago. And then I've worked with Whitson's. It's no better than anybody else. It's, 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 there must be some kind of barrier to entry that there's kind of a monopoly, not a monopoly, but really three, an oligarchy to, to the food service in this area.
It would be encouraging to see an Aramark or Whitston bid.
Yep.
This time around, it sounds like we've had Chartwell's for a while.
Yeah, we send, we send it to all of them. We bring in a consultant to help us write the bid and, and send it to all of them.
Okay. I get a motion to approve the action item?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, okay. Dan, do you want to go ahead, moving forward or back to?
No.
Veterans exemption, which one do you want to?
Facilities.
Facilities, okay.
You know, we, facilities committee met on October 8th. We kind of discussed a prioritization of upcoming capital project. You know, it's, it's going to be a big project. You know, we'll talk a little more about that at the October 28th strategic planning workshop. But we, in, in regards to that, we're going to issue an RFP this week for a construction manager slash owner's representative to help with the pre-bond process and then through construction, if, if and when the project proceeds.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve?
Well.
Oh, you hold it.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Other action, oh, did we do the food service vote yet?
We did.
We did.
We're on the facilities.
Then we have another action item. Yeah, there's no facilities action. Yeah, the next item is a, a high school trip to Quebec for the French club. And it's something we've done in the past and it works out very well, you know? Thank God to Quebec province, we can go to Montreal, Quebec and not have to cross the Atlantic and do it, do it quick and easy.
So I'm going to do a motion to approve a high school trip to Quebec City. You get a motion?
Second.
That's Peter, second.
Second.
All in favor? Connie, do we need another one to approve?
Oh, the veterans.
Yeah, we're going to come back to that, yeah. So do we need something facilities or we're done?
No action.
We're done with.
Oh, no action, I'm sorry, okay. So yeah, Dan, you, you went out of order there.
I did, I jumped, I'm sorry.
We're going to really punish you later, but if you could, please.
We have, well, it's not really an item for this, but it will be a, hopefully, an item on the November board agenda. But this is kind of a presentation to let everybody know what we want to do on the alternative veterans tax exemption. It was signed into law by Governor Cuomo a little over 10 years ago. But at the time, we had just gone to full value assessment and we're coming out of a recession and the board just kind of didn't want to do anything to, to change anybody's property taxes at that time. Under this law, districts can offer a partial property tax exemption on the primary residents of the, of the veteran, the spouse of the veteran or unmarried surviving spouse of the veteran. And in order to be effective for the 2025-26 school year, it has to be done by December 31st. Next one, I think. Yeah, there you go. Eligible veterans are veterans who've served during a period of war hostilities, Persian Gulf, Vietnam, Korean War, World War I, World War II, or did not serve during a period of war but received an expeditionary medal from the armed services, Navy, Marine Corps or global war on terrorism, or is a member of the reserves and needs certain additional qualifications, or is a Gold Star parent. Non-combat, the basic exemption provides those veterans with a property tax exemption equal to the lesser 15% reduction in assessed value or a dollar amount established by the Board of Education. And, and I think the village currently offers this exemption. I think we'd look to mirror what the village does. So we're looking at figures of $24,000 on the, for the veteran, $40,000 for the combat veteran and $80,000 for the disabled veteran. And I think these exemptions, not all veterans will be eligible for each of them. Veteran can qualify for only the wartime exemption, the wartime and combat zone exemption and the wartime and disability exemptions. And, and, you know, I guess you can hit the trifecta there. But the extent the veteran qualifies for more than one of the exemptions, the exemptions are cumulative when applied. Next, please. In addition to the three exemptions, as I mentioned, the Gold Star parent exemption may be allowed. For anybody who doesn't know, that's, if a family member has, has died in combat. Let's see, and only the basic and combat zone exemptions will apply to Gold Star parents. And a Gold Star exemption requires a separate Board of Education resolution. So we'll probably have the hearing and then two resolutions next time. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, a public hearing with at least five days' notice to the public and that can be the same day as the next board meeting, so we don't have to have a separate meeting. We would adopt a resolution approving the veterans exemption. The board may adopt the resolution to include the Gold Star parent. And if the board wishes to either increase or decrease the standard exemption limits afterwards after this first setting then it must hold a second public hearing. Next slide, please. Since 2014, the villages and school districts have had the opportunity to apply this. I mentioned the current rates or levels of the exemption with the village. And we are, you know, before January 1 or by the 31st of December to go in effect for the 2025-26 assessment roll. And currently, there are five veterans, 20 war veterans, 20 combat veterans and five disabled veterans, the rolls. Next slide, please. It's okay. We'll get there. Back one. And here's, here's how the math works. The 24-25 assessment roll is a little under $3.5 billion with a tax rate of 13.7426 per 1,000. And then we have that mix of current veterans who currently get about $3,39246 in exemptions. So if we remove those exemptions from our assessment rolls, it's a little less than 0.9%. And that works out to, if you take our school tax levy and, and divide it by that lower amount, it kind of raises our tax rate for everyone else by about 13.75 per thousand of assessed value. So the impact on, on the, the $2 million house that we usually do our comparisons to would be about $25 a year. Next slide, please. That it? All right. So November 21st, 2024 board meeting, we'll have a public hearing that will be noticed by Connie. Resolution can be adopted after that public hearing and then we forward that resolution to the village and the assessor. That's how it gets done.
Very good. Excellent, Dan. Thank you for doing that work. I want to do a special shout out to our former board president, Susan Kniff, who's on, who's on the screen over there, who really started this initiative back in the spring, I think it was. And really stuck to it. So thank you for, I mean, Dan, you did the legwork, thank you. But I know Susan was really intent. You know, this is very close to my heart. I've got three generations in my family that are veterans. I would say four generations, but my fourth generation fought in the Spanish-American War, but for the Spanish side, so that's. But I'll say three generations here in the United States. And I think this is really a great way to honor our veterans. We were actually trying to get it done by Veterans Day, which is November 11th. It won't be done by then, but, but pretty close.
Same month.
Same month, there you go. So, but thank you for your hard work and thank you, Susan, for your efforts to make, get this done. Okay, I think we're on to, where are we? We are.
Facilities.
The facility committees. Oh, we've got three committees. I think we have safety facilities. Eddie, you want to comment on facilities and safety? Oh, you're on both.
I'm on both.
Look at that.
Yeah. Safety, we had our health and safety workshop since the last board meeting, which went really well. It was great to see everybody in the room. We've got representatives from all three schools, parents, teachers, board member, all the administration. We've got representatives from all three schools, parents, teachers, board member, all the administration, principals. It was good. We went over the, the bomb hoax. It was, I think it was the day after the workshop that the board, that the school held. So we went over that in more detail. It was great to hear from Vic Barini, who's our head of security here at the school. They've got a good handle on everything. We should be thankful that we've got them. And we, there was one, one question came up about revisiting the Strategic Resource Officer, otherwise known as an SRO, which is a coordination between the police department and the school with, with the potential for that to happen, but yet, that's yet to be seen. But conversations are happening, so we'll keep you guys informed on that. Facilities committee met also earlier this month, and Dan touched on most of it. We went over sort of like the bigger picture for the work that's going to be done and kind of tossed some numbers around. And we're looking at a lot of really unattractive work, unfortunately, like not a lot of high-profile stuff, but it's stuff that needs to get done. A lot of it is brick and mortar. And, you know, for anybody that lives in town, most people have older homes. You've got to put money in to keep them standing, so the school is no different. It's 100 years old, and you've got to keep the bricks on the side of the building. So we are really excited and looking forward to that. And, you know, I think we talked about a locker room renovation in there as well, which would, which would be pretty fun. It's overdue and well-needed. And I think, I think that's it for, for facilities and health and safety for me, yeah.
Okay. I don't think we had other committee meetings? No? Okay. We do have our second strategic workshop coming up on October 28th. Public is invited. We had our first one. We sent out a fairly detailed email to the community on that. Feel free to reach out to us if you have any questions about those sessions. And then our next meeting is on the 21st of November, where we'll see more about the veterans exemption as well. I think that's it, unless anyone else has anything else to say, we'll.
I have one more, actually.
Sure.
For, for, as the liaison for the Bronx School Foundation, the mailings are going out for the annual fundraising drive for the Bronx School Foundation. The foundation does a lot to help the school and benefit the kids, everything from professional development for the teachers and administrators to continuing education and also to help with renovations. They are currently going to be funding the new security vestibule, which is going to be going in at the main entrance at Pondfield, which is, sorry, yeah, the main entrance at Pondfield, which is the only main entrance. Now, we don't currently have a security vestibule. So they're excited about that, as we are as well. And we're very grateful for them for that and everything that they do for the school and the kids. And then I also want to remind people that we've got the Katie Welling Memorial Run, which is coming up on, I think it's November 30th, Saturday morning, which is a great cause to honor a student. And we hope everybody signs up and can attend. But if you can't attend in person, you can do a virtual attendance, I guess, and send a video of yourself or a picture of you and your kids, you know, celebrating the life of Katie Welling.
Great. Thank you.
Quick.
Sure. Pete, go ahead.
Jennifer Heathwood had, she's the new high school council chair for the PTA. Had a conflict, I couldn't get there, but I asked her for a few highlights. Homecoming was amazing. You know, it's one of the best homecomings I've ever been to. The head of the athletic council is Courtney Crystal. And everyone in the PTA and Courtney just did an amazing job. It was, it was really special this year. Stephen Hale, the BOL committee had Stephen Hill come speak. He's from Speak Spots of Variety, returned to the high school, speak to the freshmen on substance abuse prevention with freshman class. And lastly, the high school play Rumors is coming up, October 24th through 26th. I just got my tickets for Friday, so it should be, it should be excellent.
Great, thank you, Pete. Okay, we'll open it up for any public comment. Remember, please, if anyone wants to speak, please identify yourself. Let's open up. Anybody want to make a comment? Anyone online, Brad? Okay. 8:01, how tight are these meetings, Rachel? All right. Well, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting. I think that ends public meeting. Motion?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Have a great evening.